...and basis of all of our work, even in all of our community. If you would please also, I think there's a right now, the climate has changed in a different way as well. And so many of our students who come from refugee and immigrant backgrounds are concerned about police from a perspective of ICE and working with ICE. And we do have, I don't know in this district, but I know in other districts, some students not even coming to school because they're so afraid that they may be picked up at school or, you know, they may go home and their parents aren't home. So can you talk to me a little bit or to all of us about what that would look like?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question. I can tell you that in 32 years of law enforcement, I've never asked for nor have I seen a green card. That's just something that has not happened in our environment. And I have to say, I mean, law enforcement is different wherever you go and experiences are different wherever you go. I believe we live in a really robust and good area as far as the character in the Midwest. And they always say, you know, if you're from the Midwest, you can get a job anywhere. And that transfers over into law enforcement as well. I think we have very well-trained, good-hearted, good-intended police officers. And so that's why I don't think we see much negativity in our area. But to get to your point, we, I have personal views and I should be careful on what I share with my personal views, but it did be favorable. I have family, I have friends, I am very concerned for them in this current political climate. Having said that, the Corona Police Department certainly is not going to participate or engage in any kind of whatever word you want to use roundup or apprehension effort for wanted individuals based on their status. Now, would there be a difference if they're wanted for criminal activity? When I say criminal activity, where they're actually committing crimes against people or property, not just because the government says it's a crime, but if they're actually doing crime in our area, they will get arrested, we'll treat them like we treat anybody else. But if ICE comes to town, we will not participate in anything that they're involved with. And it's interesting a little bit to me because, you know, a few years back this happened where ICE was going to different communities. And I just learned recently that there was concern that ICE was setting up at our food pantry and people were afraid to go to the food pantry because they were afraid of getting arrested and deported. I had never heard of that. When that was happening, that was not, I should say, I don't think that was happening to begin with. I think that was a false narrative. And nothing that was shared with the police department that ICE was even in town and certainly not at the food pantry. But it is an example of a fear and it kind of gets lax. And I, like I said before, I know folks who are not here legally. They own a home, they have three jobs during that time. They were afraid to go to work. They wouldn't go to work because they didn't want to get arrested and deported. I'm very sympathetic to that. And so you have my word that we're not going to be part of any operations. But at the end of the day, we are still law enforcement. So yeah, if it's a criminal investigation, we would be involved with that.
Thank you.
A question. You said that if the SRO in the schools sees something where someone's being harmed, they have to intervene, but that the goal isn't to issue a citation for those minor. If I heard you right. I'm wondering if you could speak a little bit more to what you mean by minor? Because something that worries me a little bit with ambiguous terms is that your understanding of minor might not be the same as my understanding of minor.
Sure.
And we might find ourselves in a situation where we're seeing some enforcement in areas that maybe we wouldn't expect to, but to you, that might be something that isn't minor.
Sure, yeah, very subjective. So for me, minor is, you know, pushing and shoving and even perhaps the exchange of, you know, blows, you know, punches. But as long as, you know, nobody's hurt and it's separated and what's important is that the students or the students' families or administrators don't have a complaint, we can let the school do what you've been doing for the last three-plus years and just handle that situation. What would not be minor is if we actually have an injury or major damage property or again, a form of complaint where they want us to investigate. But yeah, we're willing to let the typical, I guess, ruckuses, if you will, you know, that security to do their thing, intervene, separate. I keep hearing, you know, compliments on security and how the relationships that they have built with students.
Yeah.
And so that is, to me, that's a very important component to this is that we both have a presence. And then we would have that measured approach. And I believe somewhere in the documentation here, I think we used the word triage. That the school officials, administrators would triage an incident and a decision would be made at what point should we involve the school resource officer.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think I'm the only board member who was around back in the 2019, 2020 era. And I've had a couple of parents ask me, you know, so what do I see as being different since that time? And to the credit of everybody sitting here, I see a huge difference in how communication has gone between school and the office of the police office. It's just been, the word team has been used, relationship building. There's just been such a different shift in the relationship and also the shift in putting students first as a united, like get the training, build the relationships. So when I hear those things from you today, I've been hearing them for the last, you know, year or two with, through our administration. This has been a partnership that has been developed, trusting and the communication that's been, you know, occurring has been very reassuring to me as we move to a new, you know, a new era, which we would like to think nothing bad could happen to Corona. And we've had some scares, some tragedies, far too close. And I would love to think that no school would need an SRO. But we are in this world and the attitude that you are bringing to this potential contract is one that I find very reassuring. The way that you've answered the questions of board members really feels students are in a, the relationships with students is a priority for the betterment and the, you know, safety of everyone. So I just very much appreciate that. Coming from 2019 to now.
Oh, thank you.
This is.
I remember 2019 all too well, so this is refreshing.
And I still would say this is really, I think, a really great opportunity for the benefit of our students and community. So thank you. Thank you for being here today because I think the communication that we've been hearing about, I know our community will also be excited to hear the same. Thank you.
I have a question that kind of builds on that a little bit. You talked about the importance of kind of building relationships in community. But we're talking about an agreement that starts next school year. If we decide to move forward with this, is your hiring timeline such that someone who we know would be in that role next year could start to build those relationships early? Is that something that's being discussed?
As we alluded to a little bit ago, we have three offshores that are interested. At this point, I will post it to see if all three are still interested or if that's grown, if that's shrunk. But the general idea is we have several months of this school, you know, year left. And we would love to give each one of those offshores an opportunity to spend a couple of weeks if possible in the school during those three months. So March, April, May, perhaps. So we're there. So depending on, you know, how tonight goes, we will look at our scheduling. Scheduling can be a challenge for us. Like I said, we've been a little slower to fill our open spots, but that's purposeful. And then an offshore that's open for an extended period of time doesn't help as well. But now we'll certainly look at our calendars or schedules and get those offshores in here. So and again, that's going to be a two-way street. One, the offshore will get exposure to the school to make sure it's something that they really want. And then two, your staff will experience that offshore because at some point we will have a process that will involve both the police department and the administration. And one of those three will be selected. So they will have some experience with that offshore going into it. That's the plan. That's the idea.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. It makes me really happy to be a part of things that I consider like exemplary for our students. Like how school leadership, district leadership, how the board participates in something that I, you know, would say this is an example. And one of the things that I really like about the potential for this partnership is, you know, it's not so much that the political climate has changed. In my world at least, it seems like it's heating up and this, you know, discourse of either this or that, pick a side and then scream about it, is getting worse and worse. And that really gets in the way of being able to do this sort of work. You know, a lot of ways it's taken this long just to get the quiet that you need to build the relationships to solve the problems, you know? And that's what I hear in this partnership is that there's been, you know, enough space to kind of hear concerns on both sides about what needs to happen to make this sort of a partnership successful. And that's what I love hearing you talk about the culture that you have and now is the culture that we have here in the district. And, you know, for us to struggle to not let the political noise of the time impact our culture so that we can make these sorts of partnerships and be reasonable about things to solve problems. And I think that is the sort of example that we should be giving our kids. That there's all this noise and it seems like lately people have been more and more proud of their noise-making abilities and less, then there's less ability for the institution building that needs to happen to make our kids safe or to, you know, make our economics work or whatever it is. So I really appreciate the way that this was built, both on your end and on our end, to kind of create a safe space away from that political noise where we can serve kids. So that's awesome.
Can I grab the safety piece, the part, you know what? Thank you to the board for the questions. I want to also thank the community, which I'll kind of come back to that in a moment, for the questions and for the leadership of both organizations for being so responsive to community questions that we're trying to reflect here at the board table, but I know have been kind of out and about. And I'm super grateful for those dialogues. But I know a piece that we talk about as board members, as leadership, are we doing everything we can do to keep our school safe? Our students, our staff, can they come to school and leave school and be safe? Are we doing everything possible? I am extraordinarily proud of the things we have in place in our district already and the fact that those are being echoed by you and your team of the structures that have been built and the climate and culture that's been established under this leadership team, that that's being elevated and enhanced with an added potential layer of safety through the lens of an SRO. And that piece just kind of lands, you know, can each of us as board members, as school leaders, kind of go to bed at night feeling like we are doing everything possible within our scope to keep everyone as safe as possible in our buildings? And doing so with all of the dialogue and the collaboration that's been echoed here just enhances the importance of it and the value that I know we carry as a district and the hard work that's already embedded in what has been working really well to keep our schools safe. So I'm excited about the potential for an added layer to that with this really trusting collaborative relationship that has started with the adults and to see that continue to play out then with the students as the reason we are doing this work, right? The students that we serve.
Inside of that, I just have a comment that I want to say thank you for coming here and answering these questions because I feel that you've addressed both sides of the conversation. You have some individuals that are fearful of the SRO back in school. You have some that are all for, right, for all the things that have happened, right? And I think at the end of the day, I'm very proud for these conversations because one thing to me at least is clear is that we're here because we really care about the safety of our children, our students and our community. And that's what invites us here tonight to make decisions that are going to deliver exactly that. So I can appreciate it and I hope that the community sees that.
If I could add to that, I am aware that, you know, there is some parents that are uncomfortable with it that have reached out to the school board and administrators to speak in opposition. I'm actually kind of surprised that nobody spoke up tonight, but I was, you know, prepared to hear their concerns. I have previously offered that the folks that don't want the police in the school, that don't trust the police, those are the folks that we want to network with and build relationships with. And we invite them to stop by our police department, meet our staff, take a tour of the police department and kind of work through whatever those issues are. And at the end of the day, you don't have to like the police, but at least you can understand where we're coming from and what we do and why we do it. And so that's open to anybody that has concerns about an offshore in the school. And I'd be remiss, I brought Lieutenant Dart as my wingman. Is there anything you want to add?
I think I'd just like to add, just speaking from my perspective as being a police school liaison officer some 20s plus years ago, I need to admit.
I know, right? We, yep, shared some space back then.
Big time flies.
Yeah.
And also in regards to supervising the position after that, I really underestimated how critical that position is in the community. Essentially, you have your high school and your schools in the district, those are citying to themselves. You've got traffic issues there, you've got food service, you've got people coming and going all day long. So it's a city within a city. And when you don't have that SRO and that position to kind of bring those entities together on a consistent and regular basis, it really kind of can have an effect over the entire community. And I just, I underestimated the strength of that position while I was in it and meeting students outside of school, whether it was on my own time or whether it was when I was back on patrol in the summertime. And I still to this day am amazed, I have people come up to me and say, hey, do you remember me? I was, you were my PSL, my SRO when I was in high school. And there are some like, oh my gosh, yes, they do remember you and we'll reminisce about that. But the one thing that was a kid's a common theme, the feedback that I've gotten, is that they thank me. And the one thing they thank me for is thank you for making me feel safe when I was in school. And I think that's a big piece of this today is making sure that our kids feel safe, our parents feel that same feeling that they're setting their kids into a safe space in the school environment where they can, they can learn and not have to worry about any of that stuff.
Dr. Perry, do you want to?
First, I want to again thank our partners and our guests for presenting. I also want to thank our Board of Education for just phenomenal, in-depth, reflective questions that really represented our community and our parents that while they may not be here physically, we know. If I turn the view, I guarantee it's a pretty high view number today because this is going to be a very important conversation for our community here and everything that our families ask that the board please consider and ask was brought to life here through questions. And whether it were personal conversations with me or they were broader communications to through email, through myself and to the full board, the commitment in all situations would make sure that the, no matter how we got the information, that all eight of us heard it together and all eight of us heard it as a group to make sure that this was the right partnership. And, you know, we keep no secrets. If we had questions from our community, we would, we'd ask the chief justice or we'd ask the lieutenant. What is your philosophy? What is your stance on this? So we can go back and confidently say to our families, this is a response we got directly from our potential partners in this work. So thank you for being very transparent in those areas. And thank you for the board for covering all those questions on behalf of our parents that are listening intubatively to make sure that their voices were truly heard as we have committed through our policy and practices.
Thank you. I mean, that is a segue to public comment. So just to make sure, Lori, that I haven't missed anything for public comment this evening. And by doing so, again, to reiterate exactly what you said, the lack of public comment here is not a sign of our community being apathetic or indifferent to this. It's because of the constant conversations leading into this meeting, the dialogues, the emails. I'm so grateful for our community for sharing their sentiments to the board via email, to leadership conversations, meetings. Thank you all for your proactive time with all of that because that matters. To myself as a board member, it's a reflection, I think, of the ongoing relationship that will lead forward as how communicative things have been prior to this. And again, thankful for our community for taking the time to share their thoughts. Any final questions, board, before we move to our more formal piece of this then? Okay. All right. So we are moving then on to board action. So there are no other further questions, any more discussion. I'd be looking for a motion to approve the proposed school resource officer contract with VPD.
Someone?
Whoa, a tie? Oh my gosh. Right? Oh, okay. We'll give that to Meredith then. Is there a second?
Second.
Christopher with the second. So the motion is on the table to approve the proposed contract. There's a motion by Meredith the second, by Christopher. All those in favor of approving the proposed school resource officer contract with VPD signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Contract is approved. Thank you. Excited to stay in collaboration with all of you. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate the thoughtful questions and dialogue.
Appreciate it. Yeah. Yes. Really helpful. All right. John, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you to get us back into superintendent's report for a few moments. All right.
Dr. Perry, I'll turn it over to you. My word here stuck. All right. Thank you. Thank you, board, for a great conversation. We will now begin the superintendent's report, which is the one main item for today. Speaking of our intentionality of communication would be our survey results from our families, our students and our staff. So I'm going to move myself to the right area. All of you were provided a kind of a summary of the feedback. Also, in the form of a video presentation that went to our family and our students, there was a video summary of the work that you have here today. And then recently, as this morning, the Board of Education as well as all of our staff received the video summary of the staff survey results as well. So I won't go too deep in it. I'll just kind of leave it for questions. But I just wanted to do a quick summary for our community. And doing the clicker over my head was a new challenge for me today. Sorry. All right. So overall, I'll begin with the staff and the staff and family one. As you can see, our students really represented. We had 3,293 students, grades three through 12, that participated in the survey with an exceptional rate of 75%. We would like to thank our staff for really encouraging this work in the advisory setting as well as making sure that as many students as possible participated. In terms of our families, we're still looking to increase that number, but we did have 420 parents and guardians that participated in the work. And then most recently with our staff, you would see a 501 staff, 501 staff members, which is about 49% response rate. And again, proud of all that feedback. The mechanisms for which we're sharing feedback. And again, you'll see some pieces of opportunity for two-way communication in here, which I know is a priority of our Board of Education and administration. As I spoke to the video information that went out, we did post the results on our website. We also posted it on social media as well, which is kind of a new strategy for us for both Instagram and Facebook. Then from there, there was a second video from the school leaders. So there was a district-wide response and then you had your individual school responses as well. So as a family or student, you got both those perspectives of are we doing district-wide? And how is my individual school doing? The spaces where there was far more two-way was the superintendent advisory and then ultimately this report to the Board of Education. And in terms of those staff results, you saw, you see similar trends with the exception, I just wanted to make clear for the, while the staff received a video presentation from me, we wanted a more personalized touch from our building leaders as they reviewed staff data with their team. So those are staff-based meetings with school leaders to go over the data and understand the feedback so you can have more personal dialogue. Again, as you saw the results, the results that we are presenting are both district-wide perspectives and then the data from building perspectives, which each school did individually. All right. We're going to start with our bright spots from our students. As a reminder, the percentages are based on a Likers scale of one through five. If you put a four or a five, which means I agree or I strongly agree, that went into an area. Other end of it, if it was a one or two, that went into another area for disagreeing. So and then we took percentages from those areas. You can see our top four here, which are our bright spots, which very proud that, you know, our students see learning at school, that their families are treated with respect, opportunities to be successful. And a really good shout out to our leaders that, you know, 81% believe that their principals were a good leader in our school. So very proud moment there. Areas that we want to get better as an organization. And we've done a lot of deep work, especially at the advisories, but also doing some work with the building levels. Talk about what does that mean if we're saying I don't necessarily like going to school each day? Some of the anecdotal evidence that we've gotten back from our advisory speaks is like, and as much as you can get students to go deep in the conversation, like it's cool. And but also it speaks to one of the things that I heard loud and clear from our Board of Education in terms of my personal growth as leader is how are we making schools more innovative? How are we making spaces more thought-provoking and not kind of a traditional sort? So you kind of see their voices reflecting from our board as well as from our students saying, you know, let's think about some more innovative ways for school to be. Again, you'll see instances of students are nice and show respect to each other. We still want to continue to work on that day-to-day dialogue. How are we addressing each other? We heard examples of students talking about weightless type jokes, some gender-based jokes. And often there are some spaces of, I don't know that people generally know how to say nice things to each other. And they were just very transparent about that. And also spoke to sometimes some of the, you know, some of the things we see on television or some things that we see on social media that there isn't really a lot of modeling of, I'm just going to be extraordinarily nice to the person next to me. And so how can we think about organizationally about how to do that? I think about Ms. Taylor's work over at, her years at the Glacier Edge. It was really simple slogan, be nice. And but it was powerful. I want to go with the be nice right now. Mark and be evil. Mark hard and be nice, yes. But be nice is what I was trying to get to with it. But just, you know, how do you make that a priority in our setting? We really had some good dialogue with operations team and our buses, like just feeling safe on the bus. And sometimes it wasn't just about behavior. Some of the conversations we've had about long-distance bus routes. You know, how are we thinking about the long ride from Fishburg to the high school, which can be sometimes 40, 45 minutes on good weather days? And so a lot of that is just being safe and my three to a seat. And is my bus packed? Those are things that we want to continue to lift up. And our lowest score, and I'll just be very transparent, was about students in bathrooms. And when I tell you about some conversations with students about they were, they cared about the rest of the growth areas. They really cared about this one. I want to be very clear because I want all our very hard-working custodians to know they were not talking about our custodians. Our custodians work very hard every single day and are doing their best they can with our bathrooms. So they were not having a conversation about custodian performance. They were talking about very similar to showing respect to one another. Sometimes that's also about keeping the spaces you're in clean as well and how are you using that environment? Because as you still see in our family data, our family data shows very clean buildings, but families aren't going into student bathrooms very often either. So, you know, just things that we needed to lift up and continue to grow with. So since we're doing three different areas here, I'm going to pause to see if there's any questions on specifically students and I'll go to family and then I'll go to staff from there. Anything from the student perspective?
Did they also, I think the one thing that I liked was the open-ended response themes?
For, those are for families and for staff.
Family and staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Did we do it for students as well?
Not for students.
Not for students, okay.
Well, looking at the data, this is the, you know, I agree. Well, looking at the data, this is the aggregate of all grades.
That's correct.
Did you see any breakout between elementary, middle, and high school?
The, great question. The areas of growth were, I felt, were permeated more in the middle school level, where those developmental behavior ages, and then you saw some of that carry over into the high school as well. So I just think as we think about our RSL work and our PPS work, I think it just gives more power to the longer in the system, the need to continue to elevate those teaching. Thank you. All right. Next, I'll move into the family survey. And similarly, we'll go over bright spots. And then bright spots, areas of improvement. And this is where you'll also be able to see themes of open-ended questions as well. So for our bright spots, and you'll see the four in front of you, teacher and staff administrators, concern for my child, again, being treated with respect at school, effective supplies and equipment for learning, and I believe the school is clean and well-maintained. So you'll see, again, as I spoke to a little bit, difference of opinion on different areas. But again, as a strong shout out to our overall grounds and custodian teams for very good work overall for our buildings. Areas for growth. I think the biggest one that we want to get, that we have begun to work at, Doug, digging into is receiving feedback from my school. And what was interesting is that there was, there was a grievance that we give a lot of information to families. What their question was, I want to know specifically about my child and how my child is doing, while also getting some of the other information, which was a significant learning for us. You'll see that resonating and, you know, desire to have more positive phone calls, emails, or notes about my child. How's my specific child doing? And then I believe the school administration makes decisions that are in the best interest of children and families, while 67% is well above the threshold of good response. It would still fail in the lower percentages as we looked overall. So we want to consider that work. And their consistency with our rules and enforce consistency that we, and that is feedback that you'll see also in the themes as well. All right. So to your point, Moncolos, there were open-ended areas, which was the first for the Ronner School District, where we did the open-ended comments for families and for staff. In front of you, we, again, these are themes overarching out of all the comments. And dedicated and caring staff, our courses and extracurricular activities. You'll hear some of that resonating in our two reports later on today. An overall positive culture and environment, effective operations and facilities. Thanks. And then, again, you'll see the discrepancy I just talked about. While there was positives about general communication about school-wide events, still need an increase on my individual child's performance is what needs to lift up. Areas that need to be improved. Again, consistency with student behavior and discipline across all of our schools, making sure that it's their universal practices, that there's a deeper understanding of what constitutes a behavior, and there's consistency in how discipline is administered. Consistency with communication and timing is making sure that all buildings have the same level of response time. A theme that we've heard and acknowledge and have done a lot of shifting and work in our advanced learning program. We also want to make sure that while it was called advanced learning in our feedback, it is part of our broader multi-tiered systems of support at TSS as we think about what that work looks like. We've begun some work with committees, bringing parents together to think about how do we enhance advanced learning. And we have the training, Amy coming off the date. We're bringing in the consult for advanced learning.
We're actually meeting tomorrow with our shrink group who's our feedback consultant.
Correct. To begin based off that feedback. And then our parent group will continue to be able to help us think about how we're enhancing the supports for our advanced learning program. I do, I just want to put in this base and just, it's clear that we are not looking at advanced learning as some type of pull-out model. We're thinking about it as a continuum of inclusionary practices, where we have multiple supports within the classroom setting and not making them isolated spaces. That's not the philosophy of the Ronner School District. Also things that could be improved, like just clear understanding about grading homework and retake policies. There seems, there's a lot of, we got a lot of information back about not being clear. Sometimes there's a class-to-class differences that could be coming up. So we're working to be very transparent about what's working and if there are needs to pivot around our grading homework and retake policies, making sure that everyone has the information and supports to do that work. And then finally, and we've heard this from our Board as well, and it's great that we're seeing the Board raise these questions, as well as our community at the same time, lunch recesses and nutritional concerns. Again, just quality of offerings here in terms of food nutrition. When it comes to recess, they weren't asking for lunch recess. It's like, how are we incorporating more movement into our data? I'm assuming Moncolos didn't hit the repeat button? All right. Questions here before I move the staff?
I had a question. Is there a breakout of, I think Meredith, you asked this. I was curious too. Is there a breakout of middle school, K-5?
Not as much with the fam, not as much in the family one.
So should we interpret this as this is a broad feeling across all schools?
I would say, I would say grading, grading and questions about retake policies permeated more in the secondary than they did at the elementary one.
How about the lunch recess in school?
Elementary.
Elementary.
I would complain about recess in high school. Thank you.
Absolutely. All right. For a second time, move us pretty fast here. For our staff experience. The areas that we're very proud to celebrate for our staff were, and we went with our top six in each of the categories. Believe my work policy, the impacts of those we serve, so people feel in value in their work, which I love to hear. Again, the work environment is clean and well-maintained. Shout out to our custodian and building staff there. Clear understanding of the mission and the goals of my organization. I think that's a clear shout out to our Board of Ed, that knows and understands the mission of our organization, and we're grounded in it like my said. A, I think, I couldn't feel a more sense of pride than the one that says, I feel a sense of pride when I tell people where I work. That's, you know, that's huge for me that when you walk out of those doors, that you're, you say with pride, whether you're wearing the emblem, you're throwing up the V, or saying you're a wildcat, that I tell people pride where I work. And I'm very, very, very proud to have that type of representation. And selfishly, I want that to be 100%, like most of them. And then I work in an organization where employees regularly share and exchange ideals. And you think about the power of our professional learning communities, the power that our community has given us in the form of our, at least our monies, to be able to have collaborative spaces. You can see the benefits paying off there. Areas for growth, and really they evolved around our resources, our allocation, or making sure that they are allocated for the maximum effects across the organization. As you'll see, as you heard in the video, we have some really, I think, sound strategies about how to shore up those systems. The opportunity to provide input on decisions. Again, resources in my immediate work environment, just wondering about how my voice is heard in that work. Feeling supported and balancing my work responsibilities. Came to life, and you'll see that in some of the burnout data we'll see on the next slide. An organization culture that supports open and honest communication, while it was still above the threshold. I would like to see a much higher number in feeling open about communication. I think the way they were presenting the data today, hopefully, as well as people seeing that we're taking this survey results very seriously, providing direct feedback, and providing action that will be an indicator of that come to life. And in a scene of progress, it to create a culture of success for employees across the organization. Again, that's an area of growth, while it is above a normal threshold for positivity. We want to see much higher numbers there. And then finally to our themes. Again, as you think about the inverted, our inverted pyramid model, and our desire for our staff to see themselves highly invested, they do see a strong leadership and a vision of the Ronner School District. I spoke to you before, changes in professional development. I tell you, as a quarter-century person in this work, to get people to say that they like the PD is really a shout out to our multiple teams that do this work. But really, again, the power of our focus on collaboration is coming to life. Efforts to improve work-based culture, while we are not a perfect organization, we really appreciate to hear that there's a scene that we are really working to try and improve the culture of the Ronner School District. Our students centered at the focus. If we walked away from this survey and did not see this, I would have been hurt and thinking I might not be doing the right job, but because we try to be a student-centered organization. A shout out to our technology team for the resources and improvements. And then flexibility and adaptability among the decision makers. I think that speaks to our theme of theirs. We should always have flexibility within those parameters, here are the parameters, and here's where we can be flexible and communicating that out. All right. Areas where we can continue to get better. Again, communication and transparency, just more, the more we can say how, how are we making decisions? What is our why? And in getting that information out there, that'll be crucial workload and staff burnout. While it has been improvements, it's still on our back burner, excuse me, on the front burner of how we're thinking about not burning out staff. You'll often hear me, hear us asking, how will this decision impact, you know, staff workload? And making sure that we continue to have those conversations. I continue to think about, while these are areas that have improved over the years, but we, there still needs to be some work in terms of like retention and hiring. As you saw in the other data, behavior support for students. New one for us, and just something for us to consider, and it was kind of an aha. We have a lot of platforms in the Ronner School District. Power School, Talented, Campus, Skyward. And that's not even all of our Google systems as well. And rightly, I was just going, talking to somebody about the data, like, you know, we can, we can hold satellites in space, but we can't have one universal system for education. Until one of us builds that, so. Don't start building stuff already. All right. So with that, I want to, you know, just take your eyes to our action steps, if you don't mind. Let you just browse those, and then I'm going to stop and ask for questions. Or thoughts?
So, yeah, more of a comment, and Dr. Hawkins and Adam probably remember this. It was probably last year. I know the years are running together now. Remember the belong-in group? That when we got together, there were us, there were teachers in there. And do you remember what they said? And it stood out to me in the summer. It was one of the statistics, the 76%, I think, where it said something to the effect of collaboration. Remember how they said they wish that they had more opportunities to collaborate? Hearing that from our teachers, I think that's very powerful. And it's shown in the statistic that you showed here. So just saying that to say, I don't know how we do it or how it's done, but they definitely, our educators definitely want more opportunities to collaborate because what I was hearing in that group was there's a way, one educator would do something, and they would be like, oh my God, I would love to be able to do that or transfer that to a topic or subject that I'm working on. And I had no idea that you were teaching it that way. And that's very innovative. And so just echoing the voices of our educators and their willingness and wanting to collaborate even more.
Thank you.
I know this is the first year with this new survey. Is the intention to kind of ask the same questions going forward?
This will be our starting point.
Because it'll be helpful to have that comparative data.
And then along those lines, I'm going to go back to the beginning. Okay. I'm curious how this can parallel, you know, some of the assessment and formative assessment. You know, where, especially if I'm hearing, I'm kind of looking at the staff survey in particular about feeling like there's some space where there feels like there's a lack of voice or decision-making. Where can there be kind of more ongoing, tidier checkpoints? For staff in particular, I appreciate some of the buildings have added kind of little surveys for families and things that are a little bit more kind of in the moment, capturing nuggets at a time. I'm certainly curious about that from a staff perspective, because with some of this, it always feels a bit like we talk about with, you know, the forward exam. Can we really use that data to really, you know, change instruction? Can we use the staff data in particular to really change things that may be sentiments from a number of months ago? What ways there are to get a little bit more in-depth with some of that?
So I can speak to someone else, I'll probably ask Amy, who's a little closer to the schools than, as well as working with the principals and everybody. We did have some schools that began to, I would say, pilot the more quarterly staff, family, student check-in model, and saw some success there. Now, I think we saw enough evidence for that to be expanded. I think if you, I know if we were doing this on a building breakdown, the areas where those practices were already in place had elevated scores compared to some of the places that have not, have not put the practice in place, that was clear evidence. That's the model of more frequent check-ins, because what happened, what I'm feeling when I took this in December may not be for when I'm in March or in October. So those more frequent checkpoints seem to be an improvement method, based on our overall data.
Yeah, that's great.
Just checking that, you know.
Yeah. I think from a school standpoint, we don't want this data to be a surprise. Right? We don't want them to get the data once a year and then be surprised by it. We want them to have multiple checkpoints. And so some through clever problem-solving processes with staff, etc., asking some of these questions more regularly to get feedback and be really just not such a bad. But the goal is, as we now have this set of questions, different leaders are already thinking about, how do I not administer the entire survey, but just looking in to some specific areas of focus, aligned to, you know, their areas of growth that they've all communicated through their videos and their specific school community as well.
And all those little ways of getting the staff to take the survey. You know, I think like the turnout is something also that I'll just voice and encourage. Families and staff do the surveys. This data matters. We reflect on it as Board members and as leaders to try to get more folks to submit their responses, especially if there's concern that I'm not being heard. This is one way to really ask that of our folks to please share their thoughts.
One question in regards to kind of centering our equity framework. Was, how do we break out if there are equity opportunities within the, anything that's brought up, the concerns or work that we need to think about? So, you know, whether it's families that, you know, you want to mitigate disparate impacts, right? And so was there anything that kind of came up for you in this report that kind of stood out? And what are the, what's the process for identifying using kind of equity framework?
Yeah. So it was much superior to do that on the building-based, building-based data, and then being able to work with our leaders if we saw disproportionate outcomes, based off any demographic makeup at the relative than the full district-wide, trying to ask specific questions. And it also spoke to the power of just principals knowing their, you know, knowing their families. their families, we're also very cautious of balancing, you know, the pros and cons, because if you get too much identifying information, then people don't take the survey. And so we were very, had to be very thoughtful about that as well. So I think you'll see that more on the type of intermittent surveys that you saw the buildings doing, where district-wide, we weren't asking for as much identifiable information just because people have a lack of, honestly, there's just a little nervousness, the more identifying features you put in, the more the numbers go down in terms of participation.
Sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Superway. Chris and I serve on a committee, and I want to be sure to echo the voices of our, all of our educators. There is a want to have a space where educators can bring their authentic selves to, and be able to talk and interact with one another outside of the educational space, outside of the workspace, to be able to connect. And so I didn't see that here, or maybe I missed it somehow, but there is that want to be able to feel that sense of inclusivity and belonging where staff or educators are feeling like that space isn't even available. That it's a workspace for collaboration, but a need to bring your authentic selves to be able to be, to just be.
Question or statement?
Statement.
Statement.
Double beep. Opportunity, there you go.
So this is like kind of in the same, it's a question that's not an actual question. So I love that our staff, our teachers, our principals, you know, are all lifted up by our students and our parents. That's fantastic. When I see the places for growth from parents, I can only imagine if a teacher, you're, okay, I need to be receiving, sending out more individual feedback about each student, which is certainly something that a parent would want. As a staff member, then you would can see where there's concerns about burnout and balancing work responsibilities. How do you kind of square those pegs to make sure that we're not taking this data, translating it into more work for our classroom teachers?
There was, the best feedback we got from there was from our family advisor, because we asked that same question, and our family advisor did a phenomenal job, as stated before, like, we don't want extra workload for it, we know our staff are doing it. But it was really specifically about grading, where they talked about the quality of it and some examples like, I, yeah, that grade is fine, but what is the piece of information that would help me understand how my student is in the classroom? What is my student like in that classroom? And so we began to think about, you know, without increasing a narrative for everyone, like what type of like dropdowns can we begin to think about that gives more than pleasure to have in class? I think we've all, probably most. I wasn't trying to make that obvious. I'm sure we all had a pleasure to have in class on our, but just wanting to be more, you know, what can we provide as options to help understand this more specific detail, but also us thinking there's enough technology out for us to think about, you know, how do we generate a response that is broader or gives more meaning to what that is? Like leadership that's really strong in math or something that gives you more personal detail. And again, I don't, as a former educator, is doing really qualitative, one on every single child takes a long, long time, and I respect that as well.
No, that's really helpful, that's to hear what was requested more in depth, and it isn't something that necessarily falls more heavily on the classroom teacher, but there's ways to support that.
No, no, go ahead. I would just add, I think there's wall in class, and to a certain point, and then you develop a really deep relationship if things aren't going well, right? So it's that point of time between doing well to not doing well that we want to avoid. So it's, what's the safety net before we get to the, we need intervention now, now we've got a team, and now you're going to get inundated with information? So there's that nuance there, that's, I think, something to figure out.
The balance, yeah.
So to speak to Mary's point, when I was looking through this, one of the things that struck me in a couple of different areas, it seemed like a kind of classic, like, we don't have the right tools, maybe we have to invent the right tools, nobody had some sort of situation. Like, when we're looking at the communication, we're doing all this communication using all these platforms, and people are still asking for a different type of communication. So, and we're worried about like not burning people out and that sort of thing, like, maybe we don't have the right tools, or the tools, the right tools don't exist. You know, same thing, you know, when we're talking about some of the other stuff, you know, I think, for me, the way I looked at it was like, do we have the right tools? You know, so that we can get, so that we can more efficiently do the things that are being highlighted in some of the concerns here in ways that actually make the lives of our staff easier. And honestly, some of those tools don't exist, like they just aren't there yet, so.
Any other questions or opportunities from the board members right now? Thank you for all the time, in terms of not only presentation for us, but how everything went out to the community as well. I think that was super important, having videos here and voice with all of it, just really appreciate how information was shared and in terms of getting feedback. So we'll move back into board action, we have a couple of results policies to review that we had on the agenda for last week, so thank you to the academic leadership team for being responsive to our shifting and meeting agendas as well. Welcome. Amy and Teresa, we're here for.
We're here. We decided it was very intentional, March is youth art month, so it just makes sense that we're here to share about creative and performing arts results policies in the month of March as we celebrate youth art. So as we kick off these two results policies, just want to acknowledge many discussions that we've had about some of our results policies, specifically those that have indicators that heavily rely on enrollment data. We know that by and large, our enrollment is pretty stable and steady, and so we would not be able to increase enrollment in every single area. We have enrollment in our world language, results policies, creative and performing arts, elective health and PE, as well as our CTE areas. So as we approach sharing our results tonight, you definitely have the monitoring reports, but I think tonight's monitoring report is a really nice visual representation here of the challenge of using enrollment data as these indicators, right? If we see creative and performing arts there is on the left, the yellow indicates a decrease in enrollment. We have elective health and PE on the right, and that green marks an increase in enrollment. And so we see the trade-off, when one area goes up, typically another area goes down. And we recognize that that's not necessarily indicative of the quality of the programming, but more reflective of student interest, because we also have O E 11, which is our instructional program, operational expectation, that dictates how we schedule students, and we schedule students based on their interests, right? And so these numbers are reflective of student interest in these areas, and not necessarily solely about the quality of what that program looks like. So as we approach our results policies tonight, we wanted to think more broadly about how do we tell the story, and how do we think about other indicators of what's happening in creative and performing arts, and then in elective health and PE as well. And so one of those data points builds off of the climate survey data that you've just heard from Dr. Clarity, and pulls out a few different questions. On the left there, you see our family climate survey data. We had the question about my child's school offers quality co-curricular activities for students. Anticipate, says co-curricular, at the secondary level, we're really thinking about elective areas. And so we have over 80% of our families agreeing or strongly agreeing about the quality of their electives. And then my child's school offers enough co-curricular activities for students, and there we're at nearly 70% of agree or strongly agree. You can see those ratings are also on the higher end, so our families feeling as though the elective offerings are of quality and there's enough to meet student need. On the right side, you see the student climate survey data, that says I enjoy specials, as you come in elementary, but at the secondary level, electives, you have over 76% of our students indicating they agree or strongly agree. More telling for me actually is the opposite side, only 3% of our students disagree or strongly disagree about enjoying specials or electives. There's a lot to tease apart in the middle and mixed feelings for students in sixth through 12th grade and what might be leading to that, but I think this data is really compelling in terms of students finding joy and finding their interests reflected in the elective areas that we have. So as we go further into 223, we're on creative and performing arts, we know that creative and performing arts is encompassing this results policy specifically of 612, music and art. And so we did ask, we couldn't, certainly a lot of quality work that's happening, and we have very dedicated educators at the middle school and high school level in both our music and art departments. To provide a little bit of a sampling tonight, we did ask for high school art department just to share some of the highlights of the work that they're doing, to understand what is the student experience behind some of the numbers, and what are the leadership moves that they are making as a team to make sure that the classes and the opportunities that students have access to are reflective of their interests and the wide variety of options. And so thank you to the high school art department that put these together for us, they also made sure that we kept a very colorful background post their request, and got them to our standard orange and black slides. So thank you to the art department for bringing a little color this evening. So the first highlight that the team named was really the wheel throwing class, this was a new course offering in the 2324 school year last year, and something that we have continued, grateful for the facilities that we have that are able to offer classes like this wheel throwing class. Also noting that within our art department, we're really leveraging technology. So we have a foundations of digital media and design class where students are using their devices to create digital drawing, and right now they're working on self-portraits in their own chosen styles. We also think about, the team's thinking about how do we make sure that culture lives through art? And so here's some examples from our ceramics one students who are working to make a tradition, using a traditional Japanese method of carving to make some cups, and then embracing this aesthetic called labi sabi, which really is about embracing imperfections and impermanence. So this idea of helping culture really come through in our art spaces. We also highlighted drawing one, two, and advanced drawing, so we know that we have a really, we have a large course guide, and we pride ourselves on providing many different opportunities for students. What that sometimes means though is that we only have a few students who want to take a really advanced class, maybe not enough students to actually run that class. And so within the art department, and this also happens within the music department, sometimes they'll be able to stack classes together. So this is an example, these are students that some are in drawing one, some are in drawing two, and some are in AP art, and they're all meeting in the same classroom at the same time, with the teachers supporting them at their different level and ability to then work together and collaborate. So this really speaks to the dedication of our educators to make opportunities like this possible for our students and for them to grow in their specific interest area. Again, this is art, but music is doing something similar to make those opportunities accessible. And then finally, photography, this just highlights some of the collaboration across departments. So our art department borrowed the scooters from the FIAD department, and students got to practice using strutter speed to capture some photos that you see here, so allowing students to see what that looks like in action. So when it comes to our results policy and our monitoring report for art, we do know, in terms of the actual data that we see there, we do see a decline, and that's why you see the certification around reasonable progress not getting achieved, because per the indicators that are there, with enrollment, we do see a decrease. And we do think there's a larger story to tell, we're proud of the work that our music and art staff are doing to provide access to these opportunities for students, see that in some of the climate survey data, just some of the day-to-day, what's happening for our students in those different areas. What questions do you have about creative and performing arts?
How could I purchase some of the pottery? No, on a serious note, I'm sure students love taking these home and parents love receiving them, but have you thought about like an art market to kind of promote the idea of civic engagement in our art industries for some time?
That's a great question.
That makes more work, not at all, but just to promote it as well to our community that might be interested.
Yep, and there was, when we were going to present this last week, there was a highlight in spotlighted in the arts that was featured here at the high school just over the weekend as a way to showcase that. But I know that we do, the team does a lot with the art gallery downstairs, there'll be an art show that we'll highlight prior to award, maybe likely later this spring, to highlight that student art. But in terms of fundraising, that's a great, that's a great piece of feedback that I can take out to the team.
I just, I saw Nate's eyes piercing at me from over there, he started making money upstairs.
Right back to the question.
What does he have to think about?
Silent walking?
Yeah.
West has a fine arts week.
Certainly something we can learn more about, thank you for the suggestion.
I have a question. I was wondering, is any of the data skewed by or impacted by students who are like their schedules are too packed and they can't squeeze in? So they love their options, but they can't fit them into their schedule for some reason? Is that impact this data at all?
I think it's hard to say.
I'm surprised, I feel like I hear everyone say, I love all the offerings, I can't wait to take this and that, my sixth grader is already looking forward to the future years. So just surprising, I wonder if there's an impact there?
I think there's a bigger correlation in overall graduation requirement than there is for pack schedule. We still have quite a few students that leave because they're, they've taken enough courses to graduate, and again, we, I say this before, like, we have very, very talented staff and very, very exciting classes, and like go home, and I'm a teenager, sometimes I'm still choosing as a teenager to go home. Well, think about that.
And how we can continue to support the transitions for students around, with the fifth to sixth grade transition, we just had many of our middle school music staff go down to the elementary fifth grade, demonstrate instruments, get students excited about that, and the realities of what does that look like when I get to high school, and then one of the many different offerings that we have here, as well as what I'm trying to be prepared for, both secondary and for real questions, and areas we can continue to lean in with students around our course offerings and get that data around what's difficult for them in scheduling and how the graduation requirements fit into it. Other questions?
I think I would just kind of parallel and reiterate to kind of how you introduced all of this as we revisit then coming to a board vote about this, about this ongoing dialogue we've had as board leadership around how we monitor some of these more not core academic results policies, and feeling a little bit of the tug of, as board members, where is the work with us in terms of what do we want to see for data to help you all, you know, be able to inform the indicators that are created? Is, you know, where does the onus fall on us within the policy work? And so this is kind of that foreshadow of in two weeks, having this workshop time. So just to put that back out there, we discussed this board, you know, just as a reminder coming into this results, that this is kind of living in that space of ongoing work and reflection. So, you know, working with the monitoring report as written, taking all of the insights that we're hearing about, kind of some of the reasons why the data looks the way it does, knowing that this is something we're all kind of working on on our part as board members, and then trying to give you all more parameters to kind of understand what data would make sense from our perspective. So I look forward to more ongoing conversations, and I appreciate the chance to just see some of the living, breathing experiences of our students and the leadership moves that always, I think, really elevates this experience as a board member. It isn't really all about this report, it's the holistic kind of opportunity that we get into having insights into the great work our staff is doing and what our students experience here.
And I think tying back to the conversation just about some of the survey data and staff wanting voice in that, I think that our music and art departments would be eager to help us think through what are some of those indicators, what would this look like to measure our progress and the quality of our performance?
To measure our progress and the quality of our programming that they're really very dedicated to.
Are there any further questions from the board then about, we'll stay within this performing arts monitoring report and kind of wrap that up with our board vote. But any further questions that would be relevant for the team? Okay, so the board, we have received and discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for results policy R dot two dot two dot three. I'll now accept a motion to approve the report as presented so we can begin any further discussion around reasonable progress. Is there a motion?
So.
Thank you, Corby, is there a second?
Sorry.
Thank you, Juan Carlos. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion about the approval as the report in terms of, sorry, going back to the top. There's a question mark in our document, but reasonable progress not yet achieved is what we're being presented with as a board tonight.
This is where I struggle, it seems so illogical. I mean, we have such a high number of our students participating in these electives to say that reasonable progress. We can't have a hundred percent of students doing, I mean, Joe, I know you love these percentages, but I mean, at some point, like what is, is that even a result? And so that's again, I think that falls back to the board, but I just, I mean, having.
When we see all of the opportunities that are available for our students and that they're enjoying that and creativity and how do we, how do we judge that? So I feel, I love getting the information, I love hearing what's happening. I love seeing that we actually have so many, you know, students participating. The fact that maybe a percentage has dropped from last year in, you know, some areas, I don't know that that's relevant to me or indicative of anything. I mean, I, if we see trends, that would be where I would hope that there would be a push in to find out what's happening or we're seeing that, I don't know.
I mean, I, I agree with that indicators are what the problem.
Yeah.
And I think we all kind of had a suspicion at the time we approved these indicators that this was going to happen. But we were like, let's let it play out and see what happens. And what happened was just what we thought. My personal view is though, our whole structure here is we, these reports are presented and we're assessing compliance with the approved indicators. And until we approve new indicators, these are the ones we have. I think we should approve or not approve the report based on what those indicators are. And we can give that report as much weight or lack of weight as we want to, given the inadequacy of the indicators. And I personally feel that I want to approve it exactly how it was presented to us, but I'm not going to give the reasonable progress not yet achieved very much weight at all in my assessment. Because I liked the story you were just told, that's far more useful to me actually.
Yeah, to me, this is the most purest example of, I'm not so hung up on the indicators as it is, it's just the policy isn't clear enough. So I think part of our results discussion in the next couple of weeks is to look at this as like, we have created a mess a bit here. I mean, again, if you read the stuff that the board has to take ownership over, that's like, you know, we want students to achieve it individually and appropriately. Challenging levels and acquire academic competencies in the following disciplines. And then it's like, you know, creative and performing arts, there's zero guidance in there, like, you know. It's like me walking into a restaurant being like, I would like the food, you know, this is just not, and then being ticked off about the food that I got. There's just no guidance whatsoever here, there's no, yeah, I would say. I would like the food, yeah. Not that I'm thinking about it, and I'll take this question mark as a food.
Like, do we have to, I think, Joe, you have to take action based on what we've been given.
Yeah, and we kind of agreed that that was going to be the plan, knowing all the underneath. And I appreciate, Joe, how you kind of said and how we then layer that within the greater context at which point, you know, this becomes a part of that narrative.
And it's a good setup for the workshop.
Yeah, really, the timing, yeah.
I would think for any of our creative and performing arts staff to see not yet compliant and have not have the context of what the board feels that the work is excellent. So art indicators could use some work as opposed to their proud results.
Yeah, and that's the piece, right? The, where does the policy need work from the our board perspective? Where does the board need to give work or better guidance on what data would make sense to help you all inform better indicators, right? Again, just kind of where the different ownerships lie in terms of where the work is.
I want to clarify because we own the results policy.
Yes.
Administration owns the indicators.
Yes.
So I feel like for our workshop person, John, it's like, okay, let's, why don't we take a step back and ask, what are we trying to determine here?
Yeah.
And maybe we should go from scratch.
We're not going to go from scratch, I think we'll start with some guidance.
Yeah.
Because we don't have, you know, four hours.
Well, let's do it.
Our worker B team will have some stuff for you. Yeah.
Carlos, I got you. I've been thinking about this food for a while, I'm hungry.
And Amy, I appreciate how you said even getting the insights from the folks that teach within this scope of what makes sense for us to be looking at in terms of data and a measure of success within this area. I think that would be really insightful. Yeah. So I guess with that said, board, we do have a motion and a second to approve as presented. Need further discussion before we take that vote? Okay, I forget who the motion and second were, so we'll just, there was, Corby was the motion, second was Juan Carlos, okay. All those in favor of approving results monitoring report creative and performing arts as presented signify with I. I, any opposed? Okay.
Direct writing I though.
I write, and I within the, yeah.
I would say.
With all of the S. Amy, I'll turn it back to you then for moving into our two dot two dot four.
Okay, I'm so similar approach here. The, the data that we shared around the climate survey at the beginning really was all elective areas, not just creative and performing arts. But also holds true for our health and physical education monitoring work as well. And so here we wanted to highlight some of the leadership moves within that department. And the one that we pulled out tonight was that at the high school, we just have a new offering this year in twenty-four, twenty-five. And we are offering health in Spanish. So last year, you'll remember, we had a TWEED family advisory, a work group of families who came together as we roll up the TWEED continuum for our students. And we spent some time in the evenings getting some input from them about the student experience and what classes they would like to see as we built out, as we built out like TWEED progression. And one of them was offering health in Spanish. It's a graduation requirement, so it's a class that many students, all students will need to take in one way or another. And so building this class aligned with offering opportunities for students who are in TWEED as well as other multilingual learners to be able to access that content. So it is running this semester for the very first time and it looks to perhaps be growing in the future. So a really important leadership move that the team made in terms of taking that feedback from families and from students, pulling a course together, finding a teacher with the right certification. And then launching it this year to build momentum for future kids. Excited that we could be responsive to that feedback within our on fire department here at the high school and add health and Spanish to our, to our course guide moving forward. So you'll see some pictures of the students in the current class as well as, as the course summary and description. Of course, you also have the monitoring report for this that does show that for the vast majority of students, we are seeing increases in participation in elective health and PE. So important to note that this health class is actually the required health class. The rest of the data is really speaking to students who are taking PE and health classes above and beyond the graduation requirements that do exist in health and PE. Going any creative and performing arts, there are no specific graduation requirements other than a number of elective credits within health and PE there are. And these numbers speak to students who are going above and beyond that, specifically in indicator one. And then I want to hand it over to Teresa for indicator two to talk about what this looks like at the elementary level.
Thank you. So the elementary, you know, a couple of years ago, we did finally made D P I requirements. So all elementary students have three thirty-minute PE sessions a week. We were heroes for that in my eighteen years as principal. At least once a day I would get, when can we have more JEP class? When can we have more PE? It's really a joy for children, so that has been wonderful to see. And for all of the schedules that have aligned in that way. What I'm really proud of is our PE department, they have their own E L T, they do role in life, just like our other departments do. And I've attended some of those, there's some really great leadership in that and they're really talking about the standards. And more importantly, how they're bringing those to life for students. So it goes way beyond just the physical part of that and the movement. It really gets to the cooperation that they're learning in there, the safety for their own bodies and for others around. Just a celebration of the individual growth that they have and the work that they do to help children see that. And again, just the joy that there is in those spaces. So a lot of great things that are happening and definitely an area that I visit in each of our schools. And a lot of progress and a lot of growth for all individuals at every grade level, no matter what they're doing. Another good example of standards coming to life.
So those are our indicators for two point two point four or how. Open to any questions?
More of a comment, you know, the minute, because you two both know how I think by now. When I saw the satisfies graduation requirement, my mind automatically went to D P I. I said, so the health part of the satisfies a graduation requirement, but there is nothing regarding a language requirement. The D P I, I'm like, I just heard chalk doors when I saw that, like, oh my God, that should be a requirement, but that's a D P I issue.
Related, I would just say that, I don't know, I'm sure we looked into it as a district, though. Putting in technology platforms, I know that there are plugins and some, some technology platforms like Teams that you pay a additional fee. You can translate anything, close gaps thing in real time. But again, you know, we have to think about teachers being able to continue on lessons outside of just teams platforming. If there's anything that you have to write or participate in, there might be some challenges there, but something to think about, love comment, I guess. Something that we're thinking about at where I work is highly successful in any language, basically not on the number of students, but really any student is able to access based on what their needs are versus what we determine based on the number.
I think the growing interest in this class, that one section this year and the growing interest in the future really speaks to the demand for that and the need for us to be able to provide that information and make it accessible in many languages. So Corby, I will say while our language is not a graduation requirement with D P I, nor have we chosen for it to be a graduation requirement in the primary school district. That class does satisfy some of the TWEED requirements for students who are moving through that progression. So having that course in Spanish helps towards the number of courses that they take to make sure that they're meeting that TWEED designation.
Thank you.
Does offer that.
That does feel better.
Do you think about, you alluded to this before, the graduation requirements for those health classes. Is that the reason that the health and PE is kind of winning the tug of war with the creative and performing arts or do you think it's something?
No, we actually, well, this data is only reflective of students who have already met the graduation requirements and are taking above and beyond that. So it is, it is true that they've met that and are going beyond that. Similarly, at middle school, there are PE classes that are required and then there's lifetime fitness, which is an elective that students opt into. And we've seen growing demand for that as well.
Any other questions from the board for the team?
No, because we just workshop stuff.
Right, a little rinse and repeat-ish of some of the other sentiments perhaps, yeah. All right, well, we have, we are, we've received and discussed a bit already then for results policy R dot two dot two dot four. I'll accept a motion to approve the report as presented and we'll just take on any further discussion around reasonable progress. Is there a motion?
Question, you're good.
Thank you, Christopher, is there a second?
Second.
Second, John. Any further discussion by the board then in terms of the report being presented to us as achieving reasonable progress? See previous comments. Right, in terms of the interplay between these for sure. All right, within, no other further discussion, all those in favor of approving results policy monitoring report R dot two dot two dot four is achieving reasonable progress signify with I.
I.
I, any opposed? Okay, it's also going to prove, thank you for your time. Moving on to, I was wondering about that, moving on to a board updates regarding communications, specifically O E H or any general board updates.
Yes.
Corby.
Next Wednesday and next Friday.
Yes, it's on our calendar, it's on our calendars, so make sure you R S V P in terms of, you know, to Lori, the calendar invites.
T A C, African American History Bowl, where Veronica's defendant's title, I like saying that to M M S D. You're watching.
If you're watching.
So next Wednesday, I think we're going to get started at five, I think. So the sectional and then the regional is Friday.
Four thirty, it says on our calendar.
Okay, that means we're starting at five, or four thirty.
Noted.
Yes, should be a great time, it always is. The students are absolutely amazing, I'm like, wow. And when you see the size of the book that they had to learn from, wow.
Thanks for that reminder.
Yes.
And thanks for your leadership and participation.
Not a problem.
All right.
I love it.
Any other announcements or updates for board members? Okay, moving on to superintendent's consent agenda before we just sort of blindly say, yep, I looked at it. There were some interesting little nuggets in that superintendent's consent agenda this time. Dr. Clarity?
Yeah, so this is a, you know, I think some people call it bittersweet, but when you think about the joy in celebrating our, our amazing staff, you know. And then when the time comes for them to take their journey into retirement, we want to celebrate their significant accomplishment. It's serving thousands and thousands of students over the course of, of course of their careers. And so it's a, it's a, it's bitter in terms of we miss every staff member when they, when they take a step away. It's also a celebration to know that they are, you know, their legacy is solid and cemented in the lives of so many that they've impacted. And they get to just do whatever they want, you know, whether it's golf and fishing or maybe come back and teach a class or two for us when we need them. But we want, we want to wish everyone the best. But this year, we are, we are going to celebrate eleven retirees. And the big number here that I just want us to wrap our minds around is we have two hundred and eighty years of service in education. That we are, are going, going to be, let's celebrate, I would say two hundred and eighty. And, you know, that is, over, you know, that times, let's say they have a classroom of twenty-five, that's, that's a lot of scholars. And we wanted to say thank you, obviously, you know, we do the bigger celebration in May. But timing wise, we want to make sure we put them in the agenda so we can appropriately move them forward after, with the board's consent to be able to finalize the paperwork. And then we'll do a big celebration in May.
So this is kind of a big vote.
Yeah, it's a big vote.
To let two hundred and eighty some years.
I know, I know.
And the impact to fellow colleagues. I mean, I think I say this every time when we address our retirees, but the names on that list, the impact that they've had on fellow colleagues, on beginning educators. That that then exponentially just leads to the number of students' lives that have been impacted through these votes, so, yeah, it's amazing. Okay, so with all of that being said, if there are no additional questions, we can approve the superintendent consent agenda as presented.
There's a lot of gratitude to these names.
Yeah, yeah.
Looking at a lot of these names, they're, these have been household names in our particular house. And I mean, Mr. Messman still comes up on a regular basis in our house. In all, only the most positive ways, so he's had an incredible impact on. So he's had an incredible impact on so many students, unfortunately mine was included. And probably he's had a huge impact on a lot of parents too.
And I'm excited, I do have to say, my anecdotal evidence is pretty strong that people really do start to look younger after they retire. It's incredible to run into former retired colleagues. It's amazing. So just putting that out there. Excited for all of them to start the time warp backwards. All right.
You look young while you're in the [inaudible].
Yeah, and you're in that, like that time capsule, a lot of folks, right, teaching the same age kids for all those years. Like, it's just a really funny kind of way that education works like that. We get older, the kids do not. Moving on then to the board's consent agenda. Take a peek if you have not already, are there any questions?
Do the vote.
There's no vote?
Okay.
I know, it's in consent. Yeah, now it's in consent. I mean, it feels like it kind of is vote worthy, but it's approved as presented. Yeah, right, right. Any questions on the board consent agenda? Okay, hearing none, board consent agenda is approved. Looking at heading into future board meeting dates and spring election, of course, coming up. So our next board meeting in two weeks will be predominantly workshops, so just again, we'll have some materials prepared so we can have a really productive results dialogue conversation. And then we'll have two Mondays before then the next meeting, just looking at the calendar again, at first and third and spring break. So just watching your calendar so you don't show up on a Monday night when there is no board meeting.
Again.
It's so amazing that that happens. I have just a question. Any questions about our future agenda dates? All right, our meeting dates. But I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
John, is there a second? Juan Carlos, you won't even let me say the words, y'all, getting so excited now. All those in favor of adjourned tonight's meeting, signify with I.
I.
Any opposed? Thank you all.